Good evening, everyone. The clock on the wall says it's six, so I'll officially call the April City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission to order. So we need a roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. And we are all here, and for my first chance to officially welcome our new member, Mr. Francis, to our elite group here. So without further ado, are we good on our agenda, gentlemen? Okay, agenda is as it is, so I need an approval on that, please.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the April 2024 Planning Commission agenda.
I'll second.
And we do that by general consensus? Thank you very much. As we do every year in April, we have a reorganization, which means that we choose a chair and a vice chair for the upcoming year. So, gentlemen, I will open this up.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate you to continuous chair and Mr. Loftus to continuous vice chair.
Okay.
I second it.
You have a second? Thank you very much. And we'll do that by general consensus? Okay? We got it. We don't have to do any musical chairs. Our next item is approval of the minutes from March 6th. Any additions, corrections, changes, gentlemen? I need a motion. Please, sir.
Mr. Chair, I would motion to excuse Mr. Self.
I'm here.
No, from the last meeting. I'm sorry.
No worries.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I would motion to approve the meeting minutes from March.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second, and I will abstain since I wasn't here, but, gentlemen, by consensus, thank you very much. Okay. Tonight, we thought we had three public hearings, but we only have two. The first one, PUD 23-2, has been tabled per the applicant, so I need a motion to table that, please.
Mr. Chair, I motion to table PUD 23-2 SSP number one until the May Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And I have a second, and let's do a roll call on that, please.
Mr. Francis?
I agree.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. So we will move into our first actual public hearing tonight, and that is PUD 606-1, Specific Site Plan Number One. And just before we get into that, the way we run our public hearings is our clerk will read the case, then we will get a presentation by the applicant, then we will have a presentation by staff. At that point, we will open the public hearing to input from the public. We ask you to limit yourself to three minutes, if you would, so we'll get out of here at a reasonable time. Once we've heard all the input from y'all here, we'll see if there's any written input. At that point, we close the public hearing, we discuss it among ourselves, and vote. So, your turn, Melissa.
This is case number PUD 06-1, Specific Site Plan Number One, on an application filed by Yolo Development One LLC, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The applicant requests a specific site plan to allow for the construction of an 84,000-square-foot office building on 10.05 acres. The property is located on the west side of Ashford Drive, approximately 450 feet south of Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page Two, Parcel 66, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here who is eager to tell us the details about this.
Good evening, everybody. My name's John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Beaver Creek. Well, it's pretty plain and simple, Melissa covered most of it, but 84,000-square-foot four-story building, office building, you know, similar to other product here in Beaver Creek. It is located on Ashford Drive, which is actually a public drive that we have an easement over, so it is not a public road, but that does come off of Colonel Glenn there at the new Sheets project that's happening. Ten acres, lot of topography, so it's been an interesting site design, but, you know, we got to the point where we feel pretty good about it and here to answer any questions anybody has.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Staff report?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colin Carville. I am the city planner for the city of Beaver Creek. For this case this evening, we are working with PUD 06-1 for a specific site plan. Once again, it was the southern end of Ashford Drive. The request overview, as already discussed, it's to create a new four-story office building, 84,000 square feet total, built on 10.04-acre lot. Ingress egress, as previously mentioned, is off of Ashford Drive to the east, and which will filter into Colonel Glenn Highway to the north. Just a little background on this PUD. It was rezoned in 2006 from an older pre-municipal PUD zoning, combined with B2 into what we know now as PUD 06-1. The PUD gave Planning Commission and City Council control of setback requirements. However, it did state that it could not be closer than 100 feet to Colonel Glenn Highway. The proposed setbacks for the structure to the north, to the northern property line is 82 feet. It's much more farther for Colonel Glenn Highway. To the west is 99 feet, and to the east and south is well over 100 feet. This is just an overview of how the concept would look on the lot. So as you can see, kind of, it sits on the lot, kind of the southwest here, as you can see, kind of that ingress egress onto Ashford Drive to the east there. But you can kind of see on the lot itself, it's kind of on the northwestern corner with plenty of parking surrounding that. As far as the building design, once again, it's a four-story building. It's 132 feet by 162 feet. The lower portion of the building features a robust brick facade, dark brown bricks transitioning into a lighter beige at the top. Large windows and glass panels are obviously found throughout that as well. And here's just a more zoomed-in conceptual look of what the building will look like. As far as parking provided, there is 322 parking spaces provided, eight of which are ADA spaces. That calculation far exceeds what we require. Our calculation would require 280 off-street spaces, so given the building of 84,000 square feet, with the calculation divided by 300 required for office space, that's how we get to that 280 figure. So they well exceed that. As far as signage is concerned, no official sign package has been submitted yet. However, we are requesting that we eliminate, limit them to 150 square feet total of wall signage, and we are also permitting a ground sign with requiring a brick base and 32 square feet per sign face. Landscaping, they far exceeded kind of what we were hoping, so we are very pleased with that. They're providing a variety of shade, ornamental, and evergreen trees with a diverse selection of shrubs and perennials. You can see that list of what they're providing kind of blown up on screen there now. And then the next slide shows the landscaping plan as well. Regarding a recommendation, we recommend, subject to the conditions outlined in the attached resolution, we recommend approval for this project. We think it'll be a great addition to the city.
Thank you very much. Our usual very extensive report makes it much easier for us. Now, this is a public hearing, so are there folks here who would like to speak in favor of, against, or simply have questions? Don't be shy. Step right up. Did we have any written input? No written input. Okay, last chance. Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I'm going to start at my right this time.
Question for staff? So, just, I was kind of curious. So, when we were talking about wall signage?
Yeah.
It says it's permitted on the northern, southern, and eastern elevations. Why not the western?
That was just what we just kind of came up with. There's not really much on that western side, so we didn't think that was necessary, but there's no real reason for it.
Okay. And the applicant didn't care about that?
No objection, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, I know when we approved the Sheets, the drainage pond for the Sheets was like off of Sheets' property? That's not on this parcel, is it?
No, I do not believe so, yeah. They have their own kind of detention pond.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great.
I just had one question for the applicant, just real quick. So just kind of regarding the, so appreciate putting in more parking spaces needed and not, you know, pushing that. Can you kind of describe why we're doing that kind of lengthy run of parking spaces instead of like just kind of blocking them in? Because it looks like those probably last 60 or so are going to be a nice little chug to get to the building.
Yeah, so you mean the ones more on the eastern side?
Yeah, on the eastern, yeah, on the eastern side.
So everything that you're seeing is really due to topography. So the project was named Rainier because it was a mountain slope when we started.
Okay.
So it's all topo there, and it's a hard fall to the south. So really, that's just the main access road, and there's parking there to get us to roughly 3.8 parking spots per thousand, really, where we try to get to from an office standpoint. One item, if I can bring up, because I didn't see all the comments actually prior to the meeting, so I want to address signage, if I could. The western facade is actually important, because we have visibility really from, I would say, the southern and the western side. The western's really where the ramp is, coming off of 675, going northbound, going to the gate, but also coming back onto Colonel Glenn. So my preference would be, if possible, to allow for the western side to have signage. And I know we can get some things going in City Council, but if we could consider that, that would be great. One other item, I know typically, and I, maybe we can reference code later, but I think signage usually is allowed for 1.5 square feet per linear feet of building. I think we have 162 linear feet there on the northern side, which is the Colonel Glenn side. Maybe some leniency in allowing for more than 150 square feet, but not a huge deal. That western side is definitely more important than total square footage at this point in time. Overall comment. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
And I guess I have just a quick question for staff then. Does the city have any objection to allow on that?
No, so we have no objection with the western signage. Regarding the 150 square footage figure, that's just consistent with other PUDs in the surrounding area, so we tried to mimic that, but we weren't, I guess, firm on that figure. That's just kind of what the surrounding office buildings were allowed.
100%, plus, I mean, we're splitting areas, because 162 versus 150, probably getting a little close, but yeah. So no objection to western elevation. Okay, perfect. I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
Sir, I don't have any questions.
I've just got one question for the applicant, just real quick. Just a general question. Have you already got tenants set up?
No, we do not.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Don't sit down. I noticed there is a, I'm not sure if it's a detention or a retention pond on your property.
Re.
It's a re.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it'll be wet all the time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I know also that because of the topography, there is another retention pond just northeast of you.
Yeah.
Will that one feed into yours, and then yours feed into whatever the normal drainage is? And if that's the case, are they, I presume your engineer has sized everything, but I'm just curious, because that's, there's a lot of runoff there because of how steep it is.
Let me first say, I'm not 100% positive.
Okay.
I know we did come to an agreement with Sheets on routing some things through our property, and there's an easement in place.
Okay.
So I do know there is some storm coming down the eastern property line. Whether that fully funnels into ours, maybe Randy can help with that, or maybe not.
I'm also looking at the pond behind...
Yeah, there's another one to the east there, behind the Ashford Center.
Behind Ashford Center?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time, and that, I hadn't even considered the Sheets site, because that's detention, is it not? There's not a wet pond at the Sheets site, is there?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of commission. Yeah, the Sheets pond is going to be a detention, so it's going to be a dry basin, and there is the intent to flow, or have some of that water, excess water flow into both stormwater detentions, the one on the east and this one. It's just everything kind of goes downhill, so.
Well, yeah, it usually does.
I mean, you're 20 feet higher. You're 20 feet higher when you get up to Sheets and Colonel Glenn compared to where that pond is, and so it kind of splits into the two ponds.
Okay, so it'll actually go into the Ashford Center pond also?
Some of it, yeah. I mean, there's an intent.
But does the Ashford Center pond flow into the new proposed pond?
No, that's standalone. I mean, that...
Okay, so those are two separate drainages out of the two ponds?
Right.
Okay. And obviously, everything's going to be sized.
Yeah, and we have a condition that, when we get to this stage, when we get to planning commission, it's usually about 60% engineered.
Sure, understood.
And so the final, all the final calculations and numbers go, assuming that City Council approves planning commission's recommendation, and the site goes forward.
Okay. And as long as you're there?
Sure.
Since this is part of, I know it's not part of the Ashford Center, but it's, these buildings are all very similar. Signage at the other buildings is what they're proposing pretty much matches what is at the other site?
It's generally consistent, yeah, with the area. And just so planning commission is aware, Sheets will be actually installing a traffic signal at the Ashford Center Drive on Colonel Glenn, so that's also going to be a benefit to help the traffic.
You saved me a question.
Okay.
I was going to ask about that. Don't run off.
Okay.
And I hate to be flogging on this again, but how do you all as staff feel about all those parking spaces along the drive that runs from the traffic circle at Ashford down to the main parking lot? I can't imagine there being so many people in this building that they need, those look like 45, 50, maybe 60 parking spaces there. I'd much rather see a row of trees than a row of parking spaces that probably won't be used.
Yeah, I mean, there's always a need for overflow parking, should they have conferences or, you know, visitors and things like that. And originally, we looked at that and said, hey, you know, that's the main feed to the whole parking lot. So what we had them do, and they agreed to it, and the plans show, instead of the typical 25-foot-wide drive aisle, we've got 30-foot wide, so that there's extra visibility for people using it. But we would anticipate those would be the last spaces used, given the topography coming down the hill to get to the site.
Okay.
And so, being that they won't be used on a daily basis, I imagine that we didn't have problem with that.
Okay, I wanted to get y'all's opinion on that before we jumped on something that might mess things up.
I think that they're necessary, because, you know, when the building becomes fully occupied, and then you have guests and deliveries and things like that. We've seen other sites that we thought had a lot of extra parking, and then you go in when they're full and fully occupied, and it becomes valuable real estate and valuable parking spaces.
Okay. Well, I know in the past, at least with commercial developments, we used to size them a little bit too large, and we started cutting down on parking for retail, because we made them too big.
Yeah, and moved that for office as well.
And just wanted to make sure that we had a good reason for this, and that sounds like a perfectly good reason. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any second helpings here?
I actually had one question. So this is an impact fee district, right?
Correct.
So, not to jump ahead, but I was just, so then I know the next case we're hearing is also an impact fee district?
Correct.
But I was just, more from my knowledge, why is, in this case, we're putting a condition, "Impact fees shall be paid prior to the release of the zoning permit," but then the next case, it just says, "Impact fees must be paid for the project," and then it goes on? So I'm just curious, what's the difference in the way we're handling this?
It's just the verbiage. I mean, either way, we're not going to release a permit until the impact fees are paid. That one, they are going to also, depending on, there'll be a lot line created because of the new building, and so we can tie it to the record plan as well.
Okay.
But either way, neither project is going to get a zoning permit until we get the impact fees paid.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions, gentlemen? Okay, then I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, before we start that process, I would like to move that we change the wording in Recommendation Eight, for Condition Eight, to strike through the words "on the northern, southern, and eastern elevations."
Okay.
So just to read, "Wall signage is permitted and shall be no greater than 150 square foot in total."
Okay.
Or would it be better to add western?
We need to clarify this.
I would just want to make sure that "on each elevation," rather than...
On each, okay.
Yeah, so that there isn't a point where...
That's not what it says.
Well, no, to have it say that, rather than...
So, "Wall signage is permitted on each elevation."
Shall be limited to 150 square feet.
And shall be limited to 150 square foot in total. Got it.
Okay.
That's what I want to change it to.
Mr. Chair, second?
You second that, and we'll do that by consensus, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a slightly modified, eight conditions? No, a whole bunch of conditions. 16 conditions. So I need a motion on the modified proposal.
I move to accept the modification.
Okay. You moved to accept the whole thing with the modification, because we've already done the modification?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, second?
And I have a second, and we need a roll call. Ms. Gillough?
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, five zero, and we are looking forward to yet another really fine development there. That whole area has developed very nicely, and it's staff and our applicants that have made it happen.
Appreciate the partnership.
Great.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, we have one more, gentlemen, and that's PUD 93-3, Modification 324.
This is case number PUD 93-3, Modification Three of Twenty-Four. It's a major mod, on an application filed by Brew Team Ohio LLC, 3108 Vestal Parkway East, Suite One, Vestal, New York, 13850. The applicant requests a major modification to allow for the construction of a 510-square-foot beverage business with associated drive-through on 0.61 acres. The property is located at 2500 North Fairfield Road, further described as Book Four, Page Four, Part of Parcel Five, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here, and I actually know where Vestal, New York is located.
Good evening, and you are one up on me, because I have no idea. My name is Brian Evans. I'm actually in my third week with Seven Brew, so I am learning the process a little bit as we go, but wanted to give you guys a quick overview on what Seven Brew actually is. Concept was started back in 2017 in Arkansas. It is a drive-through-only coffee shop. So think Starbucks meets Chick-fil-A. Serving coffee, no food is served, there is no indoor seating, it's only drive-through operations. Dual drive-through lane, you're greeted outside with a happy face that talks to you and orders with an iPad, just like they do at Chick-fil-A. Then you pull up to the window, and then they bring it out to you. Like I said, it's about a 500-square-foot building, drive-through only, and I'm really just here to answer any specific questions that you may have on the application.
Great, thank you very much. And staff is going to put in their part.
Once again, Colin Carville, City of Beaver Creek, City Planner. We are working with PUD 93-3. It's a major modification request, located at 2500 North Fairfield Drive. The request is, like previously mentioned, for a Seven Brew coffee, known exclusively for its specialty coffee drinks, almost exclusively drive-through. They do have a walk-up option at this location, but that will be sparingly used. The building itself is 510 square feet. It has an accessory structure of 280 square feet, which operates kind of as the remote cooler. They'll have two drive-through lanes, which should help with the traffic flow at this location. I believe in our pre-application meetings with the applicant, they said that a typical patron spends about three minutes in the drive-through, so they get people in and out pretty quick. History on this PUD, it was rezoned in 1993 from A1 to CPUD 93. The setback requirements listed in that original resolution was 70 feet from Fairfield Road and 50 feet from all other property lines. Setback requirements are maintained with this proposal. Regarding the surrounding properties, so there was a limitation on the total square footage for the PUD, which was set at 375,000 square feet. We create a table for you all, in my staff report as well, as you can see on screen here. That lists all the tenants at this location. So you can see, we have Esporta, Furniture Fair, Sleep Center, REI Co-op, which is new, Michaels, PetSmart, Havertes, Gabriel Brothers. And then there's a couple buildings in a similar fashion, like this one will be, with an outlot, which, there's the Stanton Optical, as well as the Mattress Firm location. And then you can see with our proposal, this proposal here, of 790 square feet, that brings our total to well below that 375,000 mark that we're trying to stay below. Similar to our last presentation, this is just an overview of how this will sit in conjunction to the development. The property that I guess this would most impact is that new REI Co-op. That'll be the building directly to your east there, where that parking lot kind of sits. But as you can see, we have this newly created drive aisle at the end of the development there to the east, to help with traffic flow, and then you can see the concept itself for this property. The two buildings are in orange. The northern building is the building itself, and then the smaller building to the south there is the cooler that I previously referenced. Regarding the building design itself, they try to keep the same concept for most locations. Ours is slightly different. It's a single-story, modern brick and metal building. The modern brick, which is kind of a brick duplicate, or I guess a knockoff per se, is midnight and shale brown, whereas the metal accents will be Pacific blue, white, matte black, and black metal. Has a unique roofline that we'll see on the next slide, as well as the overhang here. You can see kind of that slope there that kind of documents the features. This is an example of the northern facade. Those two doors that you see there will be used by staff to run drinks to patrons on that northern side as they exit the drive-through. Regarding access, primary ingress egress will be off of Town Drive. The location of Seven Brew will require traffic to exit the larger retail center to slightly reroute from its current traffic pattern. Because of this, that's why we had them install those three new islands, the terminal islands, to create that drive aisle for access there. And they were happy to do that. That was not on the original proposal, but they changed that for us, which we appreciated. Parking, they're providing 12 parking spaces, 11 standard, 1 ADA, based on the square footage for the entire 90... square footage for the entire 93-3 PUD, they needed a minimum of 1,154 spaces. Obviously, with this proposed development, we're going to be losing some spaces, but we're going to still have 1,223 off-street parking spaces, still above that, that threshold here that we're trying to keep. And we were, staff wasn't overly concerned with, I guess, lack of parking at that development. So we're, we're okay with, with the loss of spaces for this. Regarding signage, which is consistent with what's allowed in this PUD, a total of 114.77 square feet of signage is being proposed. You can see that on the far left there, there's just one of the circular sign. That'll be on the western facade, kind of facing that Fairfield Road and Town Drive. On the northern and southern facades, we'll have that larger rectangular side, and then on the northern, western, and southern, we'll have just the directional signage on the building, just that's, that has the drive-through And regarding a recommendation, once again, we are approving, recommending approval for this request, subject to the conditions outlined.
Thank you. And as this is a public hearing, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, ask question in favor of, against, please step right on up. Did we have any written input?
No.
Okay. Last chance. And I'll officially close the public hearing. I'll start with my vice chairman.
Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
All right. And our newest member?
No questions.
Okay.
Uh, one question for staff. Another signage question. What, in condition 12, what's the pylon sign referencing?
Just like a freestanding, I think it was just trying to cover, cover our bases. That, that was outlined in the original PUD, so we were just trying to stay consistent there.
Okay. All right. And then I did have one question for the applicant. So there's like two parking spots, like inside the drive-through lanes? What are those intended for? Are those like for employee use or customer use?
It's for staff. We've got five to six staff people per shift, and then they overlap on shift change. So we look for about 10 parking spaces, but those are, those are staff. And just to clarify, the walk-up window, we get less than 1% walk-up, and it's normally first responders that can't get in to the drive-through. We offer half-price for first responders, so obviously don't want a fire truck or an EMS truck in the drive-through. So that's, that's what the walk-up window is.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I'm not sure if this should be staff or applicant, but I have, I'd be terribly remiss if I didn't have a few questions. Staff, you are happy that there's not going to be any backup into Town Drive, the way this is laid out, as we have had some, some problems with Chick-fil-A? And since you brought up Chick-fil-A, I figured I better ask the question.
Yeah, with the double drive-through and the, the face-to-face operation, and with the applicant statement, and, you know, three minutes is the average-
Okay.
Turnaround time. Plus, given that they don't have any food, it's just drinks. You know, we're pretty comfortable that they're going to be moving people through there-
And they pay at order time, rather than when they pick up the drink. Is that correct? Okay. So-
So it's just, it's, it's like, I mean, Chick-fil-A, while they have a huge volume, they, they move people through there pretty quickly if they're going to go through. And this being a private drive, I mean, it would be more of a concern if they were backing out onto a public street.
Sure.
But this being a private-
But still, that private drive is used a lot.
Right. I mean, it functions as a public-
We put it there to keep people off the main street.
Right. But given the, the volume that they can push through and, and the number of, of queuing spaces with 20-plus cars being able to be fit there before you get onto town.
If y'all are happy with it, I'm happy with it. Second question is, the, the three new canoes that are there, I presume they supersede the ones that are shown, there're two that are shown in black.
Yeah.
Those are going to get dug up?
Right. Yeah. I mean, that would, they'll be relocated. Right now, they have a light poles, so we'll have to move the light poles, so that they're not sticking in the middle of the parking.
Oh, that would be, yeah, that would, that would be good. They get hit that way.
No, we, we don't want to have it where there's two landscape islands 10 feet apart.
Because people then will try to use that as an aisle also, and then you'll have two aisles, and you'll have confusion.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. The intent, originally, they didn't show the islands, and, and I was envisioning traffic just kind of ending, and people parking where the future drive aisle is, and that was, I couldn't get my mind around how tra, traffic was going to go through there, so we had to move those islands.
That's smart. Good, good thinking. And I, I couldn't quite tell from the, from the, the drawings, is there a portico over the server doors? That's, okay. So does that extend over both? Yeah, this is probably your question. Does that extend over both aisles?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's completely covered.
Okay.
Nice heaters out there.
It snows here.
Nice heaters out there. Actually, for the cool weather, so completely covered.
Okay. And, and one other question, as long as you're there, too. The green is obviously landscaping, landscape area, but there is a row of, I guess that's a row of parking places on the, on the lower side, which would be the south side, the way this is. Is that parking for staff?
For staff, yes, sir.
Okay. So what is to keep, if all those places aren't full, what is to keep somebody from scooting through there and kind of cutting in line or short-cutting? In other words, if there's not a whole lot of traffic?
Well, I guess-
Maybe a row, may it be a row of parking blocks along there, just to keep people from short-cutting? Because they will do it if they get the chance.
So if I understand your question correctly, you want just like some bumper blocks between the light gray and the dark gray?
Mm-hmm.
We can do that.
Okay. Otherwise-
Sure.
People are going to shortcut.
No problem.
Okay. Great. That's all I've got. Second helpings, gentlemen? I'm sorry?
We have a petition.
Uh, I don't know. Staff, do, should we put the parking blocks in as a condition?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Well, I can't do it, but what do you guys can? I don't know where it would go. Maybe as number 20. Just to state that a row of parking blocks along, along the southern edge where the staff parking is located.
Mr. Chair, I would move to add condition 20, to add parking blocks on the south edge of the parking.
Okay. Mr. Chad, second?
Okay. And we'll do that by general consensus?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion with now 20, 20 conditions?
Mr. Chair, I would motion to approve PUD 93-3, the major modification with the 20 attached conditions.
Okay. I have a motion?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Thank you very much. And if, we will read the roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Lottis?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and we will welcome yet another business to Beaver Creek. Looking forward to trying your coffee. Gentlemen, we are fresh out of agenda, so I would ask, unless we have a, anything else to consider this evening, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
A motion to adjourn.
Oh, let's don't fight over it.
I'll second.
And by consensus, we are at 6:39. Thank you, gentlemen.